Coming for you, thanking you for all the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us, the Lord, and also we want to thank you for allowing us to see another day that we've never seen before. And oh, Heavenly Father, as we go forth with this meeting, the Lord, we ask that you guide us and lead us, the Lord, that we may do the best things that we can do and will guided to do by your wisdom, the Lord, to make things better for our children and our communities. Oh, Heavenly Father, we give thanks to our administrators, our teachers, our custodians, the bus drivers, everybody, the Lord, who plays a very important part in the education of our children. Oh, Heavenly Father, again, be with us and guide us and lead us. All these things we ask in our son, Jesus' name. Amen.
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 I pray that please this is to the flag under the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't believe we have any special recognition this evening, so now we move on to public participation, and I believe we have one person, Ms. Henderson Baker, will you read her statement, please?
Of course. Public participation is the time that the board has set aside to encourage you as members of our community to voice your opinion on any matter either included on or excluded from the printed agenda. A maximum time of five minutes will be allotted to a single individual or a single topic based on the number of requests. Complaints against any employee of the school system will not be heard unless the complaint has been submitted in writing to the superintendent at least seven days prior to the board meeting. If unresolved, any personal complaints about school personnel must be put in writing for the board to review in executive session. Personal attacks against any member of the board will not be tolerated. Once the time for public participation has passed, discussion of topics will be restricted to board members only. Thank you in advance for complying with this request. The public participant is Forrest Sawyer.
Thank you. Mr. Sawyer, come on in. You can use that mic right there if you'd like.
My name is Forrest Sawyer. I live out in rural Newton County, other side of Porterdale. I'm in District Five, and I'm calling, coming to air something about complaints that, well, they're not complaints, it's incidents that happened down at the school, down on the southern end of Newton County, with some relations of mine, a seven-year-old relation of mine, and she was pushed and shoved, and that incident happened back in November. I spoke publicly in February about the incident without calling a bunch of names. I believe you were there. And since then, you know, I was wondering what had happened, but her parents, all her parents, I'm just a relative, and since then, another incident has occurred where she was stuck with a pair of scissors in the stomach, a seven-year-old girl down at the school on the southern end of this county. And we, you know, I got, you know, they mentioned it to me, and I did what I could without, you know, being the parent, and I just wanted to find out, I don't, what I heard that it happened, or what did happen was, I thought it was zero tolerance when weapons were involved, and scissors are indeed a weapon, they said it didn't puncture her skin, but the little fellow was allowed back to school, and I don't know if he's continued to rest. So this is the second incident with different people, different kids. And I heard that one of the candidates for superintendent intervened both times in this, to where the zero tolerance was not in effect, to that effect, but the school would handle it. And both times, it's brought to my attention by one or two of the employees down there that, that one of these candidates for school superintendent, the one with, one of the candidates for school superintendent had intervened down there. Okay, but here recently, just this past, in past 10 days, something that's happened here at the theme school with friends of mine who has a child in the theme school over there, nine years old, where he was being bullied in front of parents, parents, chaperones or whatever they are, I wasn't there, and teachers, and they all saw him being bullied on the playground out there. And he, it was an altercation with him and what it was bullying him. And he was wind, he wound up being Dr. Fish, they mentioned, you know, I don't know who Dr. Fish is from Adam, wound up saying that we would handle it, she told the parents, that we would handle it. And with kids, with minors, you know, outsiders, people like me, just general citizens, can only find out so much. But I'm here tonight to sound the alarm about this individual doing the same thing over here at the theme school just less than 10 days ago, intervening in something that I thought was, you know, should have been, you know, handling in-house some kind of way, but I was out doing a lot of name-calling, I just said, you know, that I would come to the board and mention this, and mention that they had intervened on three separate occasions. It's easy to get a great following when you are showing favoritism to one group or another. In both of these incidents, the child that was the most punishment was the color, and that concerned me some with the intervention of some person that was not even on the scene, that just heard about it, or that was told about it by somebody there on the campus. And others came back and told me, you know, and I hadn't put a lot of, I don't have a lot of these pieces together, I just have that, I knew, I think it was irregular for...
Well, Mr. Sawyer, I want to thank you for bringing it to our attention. Again, it is very difficult, and I know what situation you're in, without you being a parent, you don't know all the, of these particular people and not being there, like you said, you don't, you only have so many facts. I will say that the schools do handle those situations, and without knowing the students and the exact thing that happened at each of the schools, you know, it's very difficult for the board to even...
Someone is being stuck with scissors all their time, the board wouldn't know anything about that?
Well, we wouldn't know about that particular incident, because we're not made aware of these things are done on a daily basis and handled with the principals, the administrators here. As a board, excuse me, we don't deal in the day-to-day, we do deal with the policy, and so we are made aware of things that happen, but it's basically handled by the staff. And so, so thank you for making us aware of these incidences, and we will, you know, can follow up. Again, I don't know, without knowing the students and without having the parents, but if the parents feel strongly about it, they are welcome to contact us, and we'll be happy to deal with it. And talk to Dr. Matthews, I think he would actually be the appropriate person to contact, especially if they feel someone has intervened or stopped, or someone was punished wrongly. I think they need to come and talk to Dr. Matthews directly if that...
Yeah, I would agree. Without knowing the specifics, I really can't comment. I will say that we intervene all the time if it's a matter of policy, no matter who the chief executive officer is or a lower officer, we intervene if there's a policy matter. Short of that, we let it be handled at the school level.
Okay, I have one question, Dr. Matthews.
Sure.
Zero tolerance, is that in effect, how is that...
It's, it's in our student handbook, and there may, certain elements are a zero tolerance element, but I can't speak to things I don't even know who you're talking about, what school you're talking about, what incident occurred, who was involved, who were the witnesses, what did they say? So I just can't comment absent knowledge.
Okay, thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, approval of the agenda, we need to approve the agenda tonight, do we have a motion?
Some moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, also approval of the minutes, do we have a motion? So, motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor, aye. All right, now moving on to superintendent's report, let's see, this is Ms. Bullard, I believe.
I've talked too much today.
You did a great job earlier, thank you very much.
Splosh collections for the month are down slightly to eight-hundred-ninety-six-thousand-four-seventy-two, but still close to our nine-hundred-thousand-dollar goal, and we're still up for the entire splosh, more than forty-five thousand dollars per month over the prior splosh. And expenditures are better than budgeted, again, at eighty-one point thirteen, with eighty-two point seven-seven percent of the year done, but we expect those expenditures to pick up. We've begun ordering textbooks and will be gearing up for building and bus maintenance in May and June, so those expenditures will pick up. And tax revenues have now exceeded the budget by one-million-one-seventy-one-seven-forty, so we should do very well there.
That's always good news.
Any other questions about budget or the...
All right. Those statements.
You had three hours of that.
Yes. All right, well, I believe, thank you. Mr. Barr, operations?
I just want to highlight a couple of items in the capital, I mean, in the operations report, the first being capital projects. We now have a temporary certificate of occupancy for the building, and we expect to have a full CO in the next thirty days. Furniture installation, it says in your report, will begin on May fifteenth, it actually began on Monday, so furniture is being moved into the building. And moving teams will begin moving select items from the existing Newton High to the new facility the week of June tenth. Overall, the project is ninety-nine percent complete. Student transportation, regular education, school bus routes for the next school year have been completed and will be issued to schools by May twentieth. And finally, in school nutrition, the school nutrition program was chosen to participate in a national USDA school nutrition program operation study. The goal of the study being to improve the implementation of the child nutrition program. And finally, although not in your report, I want to take this opportunity to thank the procurement team, who work very hard every month to prepare the board agenda items dealing with bids and contracts, they do a very good job, and I appreciate the work they do.
Thank you.
And that concludes the operations report.
All right, any questions?
They don't want me to talk for some reason. I mentioned a couple of, three months ago, meetings ago, about renaming or naming the street, where do we stand on that?
We've looked at that, and we'll have to have some more conversations with Dr. Lockhart about what kind of direction he wants to move in, and it wouldn't be an official name of the street, but it might be something they want to do at the school level.
Why not official?
In order to do that, we'd have to dedicate the street to the county, and I don't think that's, we haven't discussed doing that, nor have we done that in the past, nor do I know they're willing to do so at this point.
So that would mean taking on, they would take on the operation or management of that particular...
In order to officially change the name, to have a street name for that that would serve as an address.
Well, we wouldn't want to give it up, they're going to maintain it.
Okay.
I'm asking a question, I've never seen...
No, we can have that conversation if the board...
Well, I, I brought this up two, three months ago, and I just, I'm disappointed that we haven't had a conversation like that, even if I brought it up three or four times.
We had the conversation to find out what we would need to do in order to achieve that.
Where would that take place?
Is that what the board as a whole wishes, I mean, you tell me.
What does Dr. Lockhart have to say about it? We haven't had this discussion at all.
Well, neither have I, but I mentioned to bring it up.
Which I think is appropriate, that you've had that discussion on your end, but you have, we haven't brought that up other than that one night.
I'm willing to pursue...
That's my concern.
I'm willing to pursue what the board as a whole wishes for us to pursue. That said, even with a single board member asking about this, I know Mike's had some conversation about it, so it's not gone unaddressed, it's gone unresolved. So the intensity with which it's been pursued at this time is dependent on whether or not the board as a whole now is giving me the direction, and I'm willing to pursue that which you want me to as a whole body.
I don't know the legalities of it, I don't know, like, what all is involved, I don't know, like, if the residents, because it's residential homes on that street too, so I mean, I don't know...
We'd be open it up to through traffic, that's another issue at that point.
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
I mean, I'm inclined to think we want to hold on to the road.
Well, why don't we do this, will you find out what the legalities of changing it would be and let us know by, at our next meeting?
And the implications of what that change would mean for the school system and the school.
Right. That's what I asked for, three months ago.
And if you get it before next Tuesday, just email it all out to us.
Okay.
Because I know there will be an impact on the county, and I know, we've spoken to the chairman that, of the board of commissioners, that anytime we do something like this, we need to find out what the impact will be to the county at the same time, so if you can find that out for us, that'd be great.
And another question would be, the Ram Drive as it exists now, would that remain Ram Drive?
I think so.
Number one, if it's an official street?
It is.
Okay, so that means that we can't transfer that name to the new high school?
That would be my guess.
So...
Unless the citizens probably agree to it.
So it's a lot of legal issues we have to deal with, so...
Right. Okay.
One more, give you a plate for it. What about this sign, what's the status of that?
The sign, we have received, the quotes for that sign are in the process of making a decision.
When will that take place?
We just had a discussion this afternoon about it, so I would assume by in the morning we should be able to do that.
So you'll report back at the next meeting, this week?
Certainly can.
Appreciate it.
All right, any more questions for Mr. Barr? All right, moving on to Mr. Peck, curriculum instruction and technology.
Our curriculum instruction and technology report for the month of May. Number one, our Kathleen Hatchett, our lead ESOL teacher organized and hosted the Newton County English as a second language program. Parent Academy on Sunday, April the twenty-eighth, at Newton College and Career Academy, the families were actually transported to the event, and the students participated in a variety of engaging activities while their parents attended workshops. The workshops were offered in the areas of safety, gangs, school procedures, health issues, and finances. Parents received a wide variety of literature, free children's books, refreshments, and door prizes. All district and school SACS standard and task committees have met and are preparing evidence demonstrating how we meet all the standards and indicators. Each school will begin to assess each standard, and indicator will be ready to develop a draft of the narrative for each standard by early September. Number three, Dr. Matthews, Ms. Fury, Mrs. DuBois, and Mr. Miniguzzo attended a workshop entitled Curriculum Twenty-One: Essential Education for a Changing World. This workshop featured Heidi Hayes Jacobs, who is world-renowned curriculum designer. Dr. Jacobs spoke about the importance of leveraging technology to transform the teaching and learning process to ensure students experience the elements of the twenty-first century classroom. Dr. Jacobs will also be featured as a guest speaker at the district's annual leadership Also, number nine, the two-thousand-and-thirteen Parent Involvement Survey will be available online for parents to access beginning Monday, May the sixth, through Friday, May the seventeenth. Parents are able to access the survey through the Newton County School System website link. Flyers were also sent home to parents the week of April twenty-ninth notifying them of the upcoming survey. Written copies of the survey are also available at each school for any parent who does not have computer access or prefers to use a written copy. Our annual teacher, new teacher recognition dinner was held at the FFA camp last Tuesday night, May the seventh, from five-thirty to seven-thirty. This event celebrates and recognizes our new teachers who are new to the Newton County school system. Number eleven, our Newton County school system was monitored by the Georgia Department of Education Title I and II Division on April the twenty-fifth. The monitoring team was impressed with the evidence presented in the organization that demonstrated our ability to effectively implement title programs across the district. They noted some exemplary practices. And that concludes our curriculum instruction and technology report for May, unless there are any questions.
I think Dr. Matthews wants to go...
I do want to go next, but I want to defer to the board if there's any questions of Mr. Peck first.
Is, is he, is he aware of these, or you?
Yes, he's, I'm gonna, he's aware of these, I'm, I'm...
So I should not ask him?
I'm going to address that now.
Okay.
Excellent. Well, hopefully you can hear me better than that, hopefully anyone viewing this session ultimately can hear me, I think they'll be able to in terms of the audio. I'm going to use a PowerPoint to begin looking at the CRCT results for the current school year. You may recall that the state recently released the CCRPI results, College and Career Readiness Performance Index for our school system, that looked at the last three years, oh-nine, ten, ten-eleven, eleven-twelve, in terms of state assessments, and looked at some other things like graduation rate at the high school, career path, the ways that students are choosing, and so on and so forth. And you may recall that we had significant improvement over the last three-year period at every one of our schools, and for that, I thank our teachers and principals, and I'm very proud of their work, of their work. But tonight, we're going to look at the preliminary results for the CRCTs, grades three through eight, for the Newton County school system. These are preliminary. If you know anything about preliminary results in Georgia, they only get better, they do not get worse. So what you're seeing or about to see is the worst-case scenario for our school system, and again, with, when they enter the retest results, these results only get better, not significant often, but sometimes better. So here we go. This is the preliminary CRCT gains, spring of thirteen versus spring twelve. Spring of thirteen's preliminary, and it's spring of twelve is the final results. So I'm comparing preliminary this year versus the final results of the prior year, and here we go for Clement Smidell. Now, I'm not giving you all the numbers, I didn't want to bog you down in that, I want to give you an overall sense of how well grades three through eight performed this school year on these state assessments. I've given all the numbers to Sherri Davis-Venier, our PR director, and she will be doing a press release, be at the day or tomorrow, and the media members who are here will have all of the numbers by school. So here's Clement, so let's get a sense of how well Clement's did this year, let's get a sense of that. Plus six in math, plus three in English Language Arts, plus one in reading, plus fourteen in social studies, plus eight in science. Clement's had notable gains in the exceeds category in four out of five subject areas tested on the CRCT, and those gains were plus three, plus five, plus seven, and plus sixteen in the percent of kids exceeding standards compared to spring of twelve. Clement's did very well, as you can see here. And note this, typically speaking on these state assessments, plus three or more is considered statistically significant, that is, not by chance results. So we're glad they had a plus one in reading, but that's a by chance result, it's better than a negative result, but anywhere you see plus three or more tonight, that's not a by chance result, that means something positive was going on in that subject area this year. So there's Clement Smidell. It is so good, it deserves a round of applause for those who are here. And you may remember from last week's release of the CCRPI that over the past three years leading up to this year, Clement's had a thirty-seven percent rate of improvement, not bad. Here is preliminary for Cousins. A plus one in math, they were down in ELA, but they were at ninety-one already. Plus two in reading, plus seven in social studies, plus four in science, gains in exceeds in three of five subject areas to the tune of plus two, plus eleven, plus four. If you want to clap, you can, but we're going to be doing this all night, so you just may want to hang on to that. So there's Cousins for this school year, and Cousins was reported to have had a sixty-seven percent rate of improvement over the three years prior to these results tonight. Here is Indian Creek. Plus three in math, no change in ELA, they stayed at ninety-three, not bad. No change in reading, they stayed at ninety-five, that's pretty good achievement. Plus five in social studies, plus three in science, gains in exceed areas in four out of five areas tested, plus five, plus seven, plus three, plus four for the level of exceeds at Indian Creek, very well done. Here is preliminary for Liberty Middle. No change in ELA, but they were at ninety-three. No change in reading, they were at ninety-five. Plus seven in social studies this year, plus one in science, gains in exceeds in three of five areas to the tune of plus five, plus seven, plus one. Strong year at Liberty. Here is preliminary for Vets Memorial. No change in reading, already at ninety-four. Plus five in social studies, plus one in science, gain in exceeds in four of five. And Vets Memorial, this past week was purported to have had a fifty-three percent rate of improvement, Indian Creek was reported to have had a sixty percent rate of improvement over the prior three years, again, not bad. And there's your gain in exceeds to the tune of plus one, plus ten, plus six, plus two in the four out of five subject areas where they exceeded. You'll see all this more detail tomorrow probably. Here is East Newton Elementary. Plus five in math, plus six in reading, plus three in social studies, plus five in science, gains in exceeds in four of five. Eight, five, four, and five are the gains and exceeds, that's a statistically significant good year in every single subject. Let's hear it for East Newton, that's really quite good, really quite good. Here's Fairview Elementary, I'm very proud of these results, and by the way, backing up to East Newton, last week they were reported to have had a fifty-three percent rate of improvement over the last three years leading up to this year. Fairview, plus five in math, plus five in ELA, plus four in reading, plus nine in social studies, plus twelve in science, gains in three of five to the tune of one, five, and five. They enjoyed a statistically significant improvement in every single subject. At Fairview, a school that has eighty-one, actually eighty-two percent free and reduced lunch, they deserve a round of applause, that is really quite excellent. Here's Flynn Hill, plus five in math, no change in reading, they were at ninety, high performance, plus five in social studies, plus four in science, gains in exceeds in five out of five subjects, eight, two, four, three, and one is the level of exceeds, and like I say, we could be clapping all night, but that's really quite good. Here's Heard-Mixon, plus one in math, oh, backing up to Flynn Hill. Flynn Hill over the past three years, if I can read this correctly, had, had almost a seventy-three percent rate of improvement over the three-year period leading up to this year. And here's, here's Heard-Mixon, here's Heard-Mixon, plus one in math. They were down in ELA this year, but they're at ninety-four still. Plus one in reading, gains in exceeds in four out of five subject areas, three, one, four, and eleven. And Heard-Mixon last week was reported to have had a seventy-eight percent of improvement over the past three years leading up to these results tonight. They had a good year. Here is Live Oak, at plus five in social studies, plus four in science, gains in exceeds in three of five areas of three, five, and three respectively. And last week, Live Oak, who ranked fifth among elementary schools with eighty-three percent free and reduced lunch, experienced a forty-nine percent rate of improvement the past three years leading up to these results tonight. Challenging population, and Live Oak is doing well. Here's Livingston Elementary, plus twelve in math, no change in ELA, but at ninety-four still, no change in reading, but at ninety-one still, gains and exceeds in five of five, plus eleven, plus two, plus three, plus three, plus two. And Livingston, last week, was reported to have had a sixty-nine percent rate of improvement over the past three school years leading up to these results tonight. over the past three school years leading up to these results. Well done at Livingston. Here is Mansfield Elementary for this year. Plus two in math. No change in ELA, but they're at ninety-seven. No change in reading, but they're at ninety-six. Plus three in Social Studies, plus one in Science, gains in exceeds in four out of five areas tested to the tune of eleven, thirteen, five, and ten. Very well done at Mansfield, where last week, it was reported they had a fifty-eight percent rate of improvement over the prior three years leading up to tonight's results. Excellent work. Here is Middle Ridge. I know they are a little disappointed with this year's results, but these results are what they are. They did experience a gain of four in Social Studies. They exceeded, they had gains and exceeds in one out of five subject areas. However, last week, Middle Ridge, with an eighty-seven, almost eighty-eight percent free and reduced lunch rate, showed a sixty-four percent rate of improvement over the prior three years leading up to the current results. So that's Middle Ridge. Here is Newton County Theme School at Fickwood. Plus two in math, at ninety-eight is their percent meeting or exceeding. Plus one in ELA, they're at ninety-nine. No change in reading, but they're at ninety-nine. Their plus four in Social Studies at ninety-eight. Plus two in Science at ninety-six, and the gains and exceeds in five of five areas tested. A plus twelve, plus twelve, plus four, plus sixteen, plus nine, respectively. That's just hard to, it's hard to do better than what they did there. And last week, it was reported that they had a thirty-three percent rate of improvement over the prior three school years leading up to these results tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, you just can't do much better than that. And at Newton County Theme School, there is a thirty-one, almost thirty-two percent free and reduced lunch rate. Those results are just as good as they get. It's hard to improve when you're already scoring very high, and I think they deserve a round of applause. It's hard to do that. It's not easy. Here we have Oak Hill. Plus two in Social Studies, plus one in Science, they gains in exceeds area in four out of five. Plus four, plus six, plus twelve, plus one. Oak Hill, last week, was reported to have had a fifty-three percent rate of improvement over the three school years leading up to these results tonight. Rocky Plains, take a look at this. Up ten in math, up four in ELA. They're up one in reading, but that's the ninety-six from ninety-five. They're up nine in Social Studies. They're up ten in Science. They exceeded in five of five. An eight, nine, twelve, six, seven percent gain in exceeds over the prior year. They are statistically significant everywhere. That deserves a round of applause. That is outstanding. Rocky Plains. Rocky Plains, last week, was reported to have had a seventy-one percent rate of improvement over the last three school years leading up to these results tonight. That's excellent. Here is South Salem. Now, South Salem, last week, was reported to have had a fifty-three percent rate of improvement over the last three years leading up to these results tonight in a school that's about seventy-seven, seventy-eight percent free and reduced lunch. Here's this year's results. Up five in math, two in ELA. Up four in reading. Plus seventeen in Social Studies. Up thirteen in Science. Exceeds in five of five. Nine, seven, five, six, and eight. Let's hear it for South Salem. That's pretty good. That's pretty good. Here is West Newton. Up three in math, up four in Social Studies, up three in Science. They gains in the exceeds category in three of five subjects tested. Plus two, plus six, plus four, respectively. Last week, West Newton was reported to have had a sixty percent rate of improvement over the three prior years to these results tonight. That's really good work at West Newton, a school that is currently about eighty-eight percent free and reduced lunch. Here is the school system as a whole this year. Up three in math. We're now at eighty-two in math over the prior year. No change in ELA this year, but we remained at ninety-two. Strong performance. Up one in reading. We're now at ninety-four. We're up seven in Social Studies. We're now at eighty. And we're up five in Science. We're now at seventy-nine. And the school system is improving, as we said last week. Last week, we reported that the rate of improvement for elementary schools over the prior three years to this year was at a clip of sixty-seven percent. Our middle schools improved at a clip of eighty-two percent over the prior three years to tonight's results. These are grade three through eight results you see tonight for the Newton County School System. Tomorrow, Sherri will have all the numbers by school that you will be able to see. And this one pager that I passed out to you, board members, and the members of the media here tonight. Here we have, for the Newton County School System, for Language Arts, Math, Reading, Science, and Social Studies, a grade-by-grade account of how we did. Everywhere you see green for the subject area and the grade level is where we increased this year versus the prior year, even in meets and exceeds standards. Everywhere you see, look at the yellow. Everywhere you see yellow indicates that we exceed, we did better in the exceeds category over the prior year. There's lots of yellow on this sheet. And this is preliminary twelve, thirteen versus the final results for eleven, twelve. And remember what I said earlier, these preliminary results will only get a little better. They will never get worse, because when they add the retest results in, they've already factored in kids who have failed, and they simply give you additional credit for the kids who take the test the second time and finally pass the exam. So frankly, this is an excellent rate of improvement. Redundantly put, I am very proud of the work of our teachers and our administrators. They had a very good year in our elementary, middle schools. And if our EOC T results are anything like these results, I will dance some of the siglem because it would be worth dancing, because we would have had a very, very good year. Anecdotally, I hear through the grapevine that the EOC Ts look good. Who knows? Maybe when they come in, they will not be. But that's not what I'm hearing, so I hope that the informal reports that I've heard are as good as the real results that you've seen here tonight. So with that, Madam Chairman, I thought you would like to hear that report.
Yes, thank you.
You're very welcome.
And I want to thank Dr. Matthews and your team for making those, leading us to make those improvements over the past few years, and we can see them through the results.
We have good people, but the people in this building would tell you, unless teachers and principals
It's the teachers, right.
Go forward with all of the work that we've done in terms of training and collaborating and talking with each other about what to do and what not to do, and taking the necessary steps for our children, these results would not be what they are.
Very true, very true. All right, enrollment report.
Our enrollment report for May ninth is nineteen thousand and seventy-seven students. We're up from last year, from May the third, where we had eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four, which is a difference of one hundred and thirty-three students.
There's a question. Is it possible to tweak this to show the college, I mean, the career academy results on this?
Yes, we, they have, yes, we can add that.
Okay.
And let you know how many.
Like down at the bottom?
I know, yeah. I know they're reported at their base school, but we could always add in CCA to let you know how many.
Otherwise, continue, you have to ask what it is, you know, you see this in its entirety.
Right. It just wouldn't be in the total, because those go.
Right.
Just wouldn't say separated.
Right. We can do that.
Great, thanks. No old business, so moving on to our new business. Let's see, this would be Ms. Bullard for our presentation of our tentative budget.
Which she did for about three, two hours, I guess, probably.
Right.
Yes, and the last tab in your budget book is the tentative budget that you will hopefully approve next week, and changes can be made all the way up until the time you vote, and then we'll advertise it in the paper for two weeks, and the final vote on June 25th.
All right. Any questions? I think we asked all this afternoon. So thank you. Moving on, and this is one we will need to take a vote on tonight. Ms. Lumens, in fact, I think you have the next.
Several. But we'll go, do this one first, and we'll take a vote on it, and then move on.
Okay. Agenda item B of Fairview Elementary School HVAC and Roofing Project. The superintendent recommends the acceptance of the low bid of the Fairview Elementary School Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning and Roofing Project to be awarded to Kevin Price, General Contractors of Watkinsville, Georgia. The last few years, we've been evaluating all the roof and HVAC units that are more than fifteen years old with the assistance of a couple of consulting firms and with our architectural firm Cunningham Forehand, Matthews &amp; Moore. And this is the first one that we have brought to you. We are proposing to spend one million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars with Kevin Price, General Contractors, from capital funds, and we do need a vote on this one tonight.
All right. Do we have any questions?
And the funding for this particular project, is it SPOST?
Yes, sir, it's SPOST.
It is SPOST. And so recognition that what our taxpayers have done to help us is certainly being utilized for very worthy projects.
All right. Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so it passes. Do you want to continue one with the next?
Item C, renewal contract for uniforms for the school nutrition program. The superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract awarded to Uniforms Unlimited of Athens, Georgia, for the purchase of uniforms for the school nutrition program be renewed for an additional contract period. The estimated contract value of this is forty thousand dollars.
All right, any questions? Moving on.
I have one question.
Okay, sorry.
How long have we been on the contract with?
This is, this will be our second year.
Second year, okay.
All right.
Item D, contract for food for the school nutrition program. The superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for food items for the school nutrition program be awarded to U.S. Food Service of Fairburn, Georgia. After review, it was determined that the bid offered by U.S. Food Service met all specifications and quality requirements, and the estimated contract value is two million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
All right, any questions? Item E.
Contract for paper and cleaning supplies for the school nutrition program. The superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for paper and cleaning supplies for the school nutrition program be awarded to Southeastern Paper Group of College Park, Georgia. The, there were several companies who bid on this, but due to delivery considerations, it was determined to be in the best interest of the school system to award the bid on an all-or-nothing basis to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and that would be Southeastern Paper Group. The estimated contract value is four hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Questions? None, we can move on to the next item.
Item F, contract for kitchen smallwares. The superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for kitchen smallwares for the school nutrition program be awarded to Manning Brothers Food Service Equipment of Athens, Georgia. Although five vendors submitted bids, only three of those were deemed non-responsive and incomplete, and two vendors were included in the final evaluation process, and Manning Brothers had the lowest bid at sixty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-one
All right. Any questions? None, we can move on.
Item G is a renewal of contract for electrical services. The superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract awarded to R&amp;E Electric Incorporated of Covington, Georgia, for the purchase of electrical services be renewed for an additional contract period. The original contract was awarded in May of 2010, and the estimated annual contract value is two hundred thousand dollars.
All right, any questions? I think it's item H, and we will need to take a vote on this. Is that correct?
We do? Okay, sorry. Oops. Okay. Contract for natural gas supplier. The superintendent recommends an annual renewable contract for the provision of natural gas to selected schools and facilities be awarded to Gas South of Atlanta, Georgia. The summary of the request for proposal scoring is provided in the chart, and after review, it was determined the proposals submitted by Gas South offered the best value to the school system. Estimated contract value is sixty thousand dollars.
All right, again, this is one we need to take a vote on tonight. Are there any questions?
Is this, the cost on this is going down as opposed to the last one?
Slightly. Just a little, but slight amount.
Slight amount.
Ms. Henderson-Baker, we're on item H, and we need to take a vote on it tonight. Are you familiar with it, or would you like Jan to?
I'm sorry. Point of personal privilege, I'd take here or something. Do you mind? Yeah.
Contract for natural gas supplier.
Okay. Let me look at it right quick.
Do you want me to review it again?
No, I actually had looked at it earlier on SharePoint earlier today, so it's fine.
Are you ready? Has already been taken? Motion? No, we need a motion to approve or disapprove.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second. All right, all in favor? Aye. And it passes. All right, item I, Ms. Lumens, we're still moving forward.
This is a request to use Sharp Stadium and Sharp Field. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the use of Sharp Stadium by Covington Police Department on a routine basis for physical fitness purposes. And in return for the use of our stadium, they have agreed to help us, for lack of a better word, police, who is using our stadium for exercise, and if people do not have the Board's approval to be there, they will ask them to leave. So it's at no cost to the school system.
Question, do we have lots of people who make that request?
We have had lots of people using the stadium because they had keys that we're not sure where they got keys, so we have changed the locks.
Mysterious key.
So this is the first request that we've had since the locks were changed.
Just curious. All right. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to J.
This is a request to use Clement's Middle School for a summer meal program. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the use of Clement's Middle School Kitchen by the Rock of Salvation for the preparation of food for a summer meal program in Newton County. The agreement is that rental fee for use of the facility for twenty days is eleven hundred dollars, and utility cost fee will be sixteen hundred dollars to be paid to the school.
All right, any questions? If not, I believe we're finished.
Thank you very much.
Now we move on to Mr. Barr.
I actually do have a question about that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Barr. You can answer it from your chair. Just on the Rock of Salvation or the usage of Clement's Middle School, do they provide the liability-like insurance on that, just in the event of some slip and fall, many slips and falls?
They will provide, yes, for their employees, yes, they will.
Okay. Okay, that was my only question.
All right, item K, the superintendent recommends declaring the identified property from Charter Challenge Academy, Clement's Middle, Flint Hill Elementary, Livingston Elementary, Oak Hill Elementary, Newton County Theme School, and the Transportation Department as surplus and authorizes for the appropriate disposal of these items. And that is item K.
Any questions? All right, if there are none, Ms. Fury, I believe is next.
Good evening. The superintendent recommends the use of Title II-A, which will be federal funds to purchase PD-360 for the 2013, 2014 school year. The purchase is a continuation of a contract approved during the 10-11 school year. The total purchase is thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
All right, are there any questions?
Just a comment. PD-360 is used often with faculty to improve their professional knowledge and skills, and is an important part of the evaluation. is an important part of the evaluation system, actually, in the school system.
All right. Item M?
Mr. Satterfield.
Mr. Satterfield, okay.
Item M, the superintendent recommends the approval of the attached agreements between the Newton County School System and the following individuals to provide physical therapy and occupational therapy services to students with disabilities in accordance with their IEPs.
All right. Any questions? We're good, thank you. Next, I think, is Mr. Shattuck. I think you have items N and O.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Matthews, Madam Chairwoman, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Item N is, I'm trying to go paper, listen.
You're using technology.
The superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract awarded to sophomore of Dowington, Pennsylvania for the purchase of Kaspersky Enterprise antivirus software to be renewed for an additional contract period. The effective date of the renewal will be May 19, 2013, and the expiration date will be May 18, 2014. This will be the third year, the second renewal, the third year of this contract period, of this contract.
All right, next item is O.
The superintendent-
We were questioning, we did make a comment today in the budget meeting, we need to do more electronic, as you say.
He's modeling for all of us. He's modeling for all of us. I made the comment about the paper, Dr. Shattuck, you are exactly right.
Ms. Henderson Baker, I'm following your direction. I'm making an effort here.
Going green.
The superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for Microsoft licensing agreement be awarded to Dell Marketing LP of Round Rock, Texas. The effective date will be June 15, 2013, and the expiration date will be June 14, 2014. Let me explain this. Last year, this contract was awarded to a different company, but the purchasing department, in their diligence to save money, looked at the state contract to see if it was cheaper we could get through the state contract. And they did find that, and that a state contract was awarded to Dell. So we're changing vendors, the products are the same, we're changing vendors.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item P is Dr. Matthews.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I respectfully request your approval of the items presented in tonight's executive session.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Madam Chair, I'll have to abstain from one of the items in executive session, please.
All right. All right, therefore, all in favor of the motion on the table to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, pass this 3-1. Thank you, Madam Chairman. And with that, I have one announcement coming out of the executive session tonight. And I'm pleased to announce the appointment of the Director of Testing, Research, and Evaluation for the Newton County School System. I'm going to ask this young lady to stand. Dr. Allison Jordan. Dr. Jordan, are you here? I thought I saw you earlier. You're in the audience? I thought she was here. But Dr. Jordan teaches at Clements, not, does not teach there. She is an assistant principal at Clements Middle School and has great expertise in the area of testing and research. And Dr. Skinner certainly saw that during his tenure, she worked very closely with him during that time. So no, Clements will hate to lose Dr. Jordan, but the school system has got an excellent test director coming up in the future. We congratulate Dr. Jordan. So that concludes my remarks.
All right, great, thank you. Item Q. Before we get to that, I just want to say, this is the one I think many of you have been waiting, anticipating. It's the requested board action relative to the appointment of superintendent to replace our retiring Dr. Matthews. And I just want to say, the final three candidates, regardless of who is chosen tonight or whatnot, that our final three candidates are all very fine individuals, both personally and in the field as educators. We would be very likely to have any of them. I'm confident all three of the candidates would do a fine job. So with that said, do we have a motion to appoint a new superintendent?
I make a motion for the appointment of Samantha Fury as the next superintendent for the Newton County School System.
All right, do we have a second?
I often motion that we eliminate Dr. Pierce for the superintendent.
But I think the motion, first motion on the table, and please forgive me if this is wrong, we don't need to have a second for the motion that Mr. Metter's made first. So do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. So we have the motion on the table for Ms. Fury, and we have a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right, so it's 3-2. Ms. Fury is the new superintendent in Newton County Schools. Congratulations. Not sure if this is a good thing or a bad thing, or, you may change your mind in a few days. But we'll start the process from this point forward with the contracts and moving forward. All right, thank you. All right, with that said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Wait a minute, you forgot other matters of interest.
Oh, other matters of interest, sorry.
Graduation.
We do, we've got a few things. We were, in fact, before the meeting, Dr. Matthews and I were talking about all the things we have coming up. We have retirement dinner for our retiring administrators, teachers, staff, Thursday, May 16th at 7:00. We have our graduation in a week, a little over a week. At Springfield, we have Newton High at 8:00 on Friday night. Saturday at 9:00 a.m. will be Eastside, and 3:00 Saturday afternoon on the 25th will be Alcovee. So, or now, do any of our board members have any other matters of interest?
I echo what you said earlier. I think Dr. Matthews doesn't give himself a lot of, I guess, congratulations. But he really has been instrumental in, you know, putting curriculum and instruction in school improvement at the forefront the three years, and I feel very lucky to have worked with him. I've learned a lot from him. We fought a little bit, but I've learned, I've learned more from him than he has learned from me. I'm very, very proud that he's been in Newton County, and I think he is behind a lot of the improvement. Of course, it takes every classroom teacher, every parent, every custodian, bus driver, everybody makes it work, and I'm real proud that he's been with us these three years.
Thank you.
Without repeating both what you said, Abigail, and Jeff said over, I'll just say ditto to that. But also, I think, I'm just so happy to see the improvement and the work working, actually. I think curriculum, the people we have in place, and that has a lot to do with that as well. The professional development, the learning communities, I'm just loving everything that's going on all around. I think in order to see progress, I agree with a lot of people in the dialogue and the communication that I've had over the last couple of weeks, which I greatly appreciate from so many people, teachers, administrators, community members and stuff. This was a very tough decision. But I think in order to see progress really make its mark, you have to kind of know what's going on. You have to be somebody who knows what's going on, who believes in it, who's vested in it. And I hope to continue to see that progress. I'm glad you have put some things in place, Dr. Matthews. I hope those things will continue. That's what I keep hearing, that people would like for it to continue. And they want to be confident that the person is going to continue that work. So, good luck to you, Ms. Fury.
Yes, I have to echo, that's what I've heard, so much input from the community, faculty, and, you know, the students themselves. And I just feel that we're moving forward, we're on the path, we're in the right path, we've got proven results. And right now, we don't need change, we need to let Ms. Fury take the lead and move us forward and have us progress even more. So, thank you. All right.
I would just like to say that, number one, I hope we continue to get the positive reports through the media and the citizens of this county as to how well our school system is doing. We've had so much negativity over the past few years about how bad our school system is and comparing us to other school systems. I'm not going to say anything negative about any other school system where they may be located. However, I would be willing to put our school system up with any other system in the state of Georgia and other places. With that said, that goes out to say that I thank for, thank you for Dr. Matthews, for the leadership that you have shown through the years, as well as our administrators, our teachers, everybody who has played a big, important part in the education of our children. Having said that, I know everybody has been on pins and needles as to who our next superintendent is going to be. We went through a process, and the process was, was done. And I'm the first to say that congratulations to Ms. Fury. And I will do everything and anything that I can do to support you to make sure we continue to make the progress that we've made over the years. And again, board members, this has been a very stressful situation for all of us. We've had many of people who have called and voiced their opinion, and so this is all behind us now. And what I would like for the Board of Education to do, to show our professionalism, to continue to work together as a board and support individuals to make sure that our school system continue to make the positive progress that it has made over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said. All right, now, without further ado, I'd like a motion to adjourn. Until next week?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.